I'm going to go ahead and call this to order. This is a special call meeting. I said it's just a work session, there'll be no business deducted. What I want to do with what the commissioners is run through this legislation. And then where we've made some changes and taken a bunch of stuff out. I thought it's just easiest to go through, maybe one by one.
How you starting?
I'm going to start. It's page one on the packet I gave you all at the last meeting. And then this is the corrections to it. And this is the way most of the cities do it, just because this thing is so hard to, it's kind of cumbersome to deal with. We'll start on this. This chapter one is scope and administration. And a lot of this is just filling in the blanks. Section 101.1, the title, is where we have to insert the name of the city, where the jurisdiction's at. So on your page, we'll say, "Section 101.1, insert that's corresponding to that."
Where is page one? I think I've got it shuttled. There it is. Okay.
Okay, then the next one that will be changed is 102.3. And replacing that with everything written on the handout I gave you today, which is the same as the last time. Talking about repairs and additions, alterations to structures, or changes of options to be done in courts with the procedural provisions of. And they talk about the Kentucky Building Code, the Residential Code, the Kentucky Plumbing Code, Kentucky Heat and ventilation, air conditioning laws, Kentucky Mechanical and Standards of Safety, National Fire Code. Then the next one that would be changed is 102.7. And these are including these codes with the ones in Chapter 8. And a lot of this is kind of like, say, is housekeeping, though.
Getting the wording right.
Yeah. The 103.5 is under the Department of Property Maintenance Inspection. Talking about the fees for activities and services performed by the department and carrying out its responsibilities under this code shall be, as indicated in the following schedule. And we are not adopting that one because we do not charge fees for those inspections. Now, this next one highlighted in pink is one that has been changed since the last meeting. That goes to 104.3, right to entry. The way the sample ordinance is written up, it says where it is necessary to make an inspection to enforce the provisions of this code, or whenever the code official has a reasonable cause to believe that there exists in a structure or upon a premises a condition in violation of the code. And it goes on quite a bit about that. The changes we're making here is that the right to entry is not permitted to occupy single-family residential structures or to occupied areas of a multi-family residential structure.
That's paragraph I had a big circle on.
Well, that's the one we had talked about and should have had this in there to begin with. David, of course, code enforcement officer, we've talked quite a bit at length about some of these. It still gives, you know, I don't know that we have a whole lot that's got apartment buildings with public areas in it. And something like that generally is not a problem, but we wanted to make sure that we're not going to go into somebody's house. Next item is 106.2, notice of violation. And this is where it gets replaced with a whole lot of stuff. And this is basically what they do now, because David and I have talked about this. And I'll go through it here real quick. Number one, when a code official, based upon personal observation or investigation, or in our case, a lot of times a complaint, has reasonable cause to believe that a violation of this code has occurred, he is authorized to issue a notice of violation to the owner of the property. The NOV shall provide a minimum of 10-day time period in which the owner may remedy the violation without further penalty. If the owner fails or refuses to remedy the violation within the time specified, or fails to contact the code official with a plan to remedy the violation, a citation will be issued. As an additional alternative remedy to the above penalty, any violator who violates any provision of the City Property Maintenance Code and/or Nuisance Code and has previously been issued a NOV for violating the same section of this ordinance for the same property may be issued an immediate citation with no grace period. So if it's a second in a 12-month period, they can skip the notice of violation and go straight to a citation. Item three, any NOV issued by the code official for a violation or violations of the Property Maintenance Code shall be in a form prescribed by the city and shall contain, in addition to any other information required by ordinance or rule of the board, the following: date and time of issuance, the name and address of the person to whom it's issued, date and time the offense or violation was committed, the facts constituting the offense or violation, the section of the code or number of the ordinance violated, the name of the code official, and a statement that if the person fails to remedy the issues outlined in the NOV within the time allowed, a citation will be issued. Now, item number four, any NOV that is issued for the violation or violations of this code must be served upon the owner of the property or any individual with a legal interest in the property by certified mail, return receipt requested, or personal delivery, or by leaving the notice at the person's usual place of residence with any individual residing thereof who is 18 years of age or older and who is informed of the contents of the notice. And then number D is if the notice is returned showing that the letter was not delivered, a copy thereof shall be posted in a conspicuous place on or in or about the structure affected by the notice. Number five, if the owner does not respond to the NOV within the specified time given, a citation shall be issued. Any citation issued by the code official for a violation or violations of this code shall be in a form prescribed by the city and shall contain, in addition to any information required by, and it's basically the same as information that goes in the notice of But in addition to the civil fine that will be imposed for the violation, if the person does not contest the citation, each day the violation exists is considered a separate offense and the civil fine will accrue daily. The maximum civil fine that may be imposed if a person elects to contest this citation, the procedure for the person to follow in order to pay the civil fine or to contest the citation, and then the statement that if the person fails to pay the fine set forth in the citation or contests the citation within the time allowed, the person shall be deemed to have waived the right to a hearing before the code enforcement board to contest the citation, and that the determination of that violation shall be final. And then number six, any citations issued for the violation of this, and again, it's sent out by certified mail, return copy, personal delivery, or by leaving. If the notice is showing not delivered, it can be posted in a conspicuous place on the property. Number seven, after issuing a citation to an alleged violator of the Property Maintenance Code, the code official shall notify the board by delivering a citation to the administrative official designated by ordinance or by the code enforcement board. And then eight, and this is what we do now anyway, but it's kind of the important part. When a citation for a violation or violations of the code is issued, the person to whom the citation is issued shall, at minimum, have a seven-day grace period in which to remedy the violation and pay the civil fine or request in writing a hearing before the code enforcement board to contest the citation. If the person fails to respond to the citation within seven days, the person shall be deemed to have waived his right to a hearing to contest the citation, and the termination of violation was committed shall be final. In this event, the code enforcement board shall enter a final order determining that the violation was committed and imposing the civil fine set forth in the citation. The notice of final order shall be given in the same manner as set forth in subsection four above. When a final order is issued, the person to whom the final order is issued has 30 days to remedy the violation and pay the civil fine. If no response within the 30 days, the city of Beverden shall possess a lien on the real property owned by the person found by a final non-appellable order of the code enforcement board to have committed a violation of the Property Maintenance Code for all fines assessed for the violation and for all charges and fees incurred by the city in connection. Leans shall be noticed to all persons from the time of this recording, shall bear an interest of 12% per annum, and the lien shall take precedence over all subsequent leans except state, county, school, board, and city taxes, and may be enforced by judicial proceedings. If no action is taken within the 30-day period, the city of Beverden will file a lien on the property in question. Number nine, when a hearing before the code enforcement board has been requested, the code board shall schedule a hearing not less than seven days before the date set for the hearing. The code enforcement shall notify the person who had requested the hearing of the date, time, and place of the hearing, and the notes to hearing shall be given in the same manner set forth in number four above. Each case before the code enforcement board may be presented by either an attorney selected by the city of Beverden or by the code officer, and we always just do the code officer. An attorney may either be counsel to the code enforcement board or may represent the city by presenting a case before the board, but in no case shall the attorney serve in both capacities, which is really kind of redundant for us. Number 11, all testimony of the code enforcement board hearings shall be under oath and shall be recorded. The code enforcement board shall take testimony from the code officials, the alleged offender, and any witnesses to the alleged violation offered by the code officials. Former rules of evidence shall not apply, but fundamental due process shall be observed and governed in proceedings. At the hearing, the code enforcement board shall determine, based on the evidence presented, whether a violation was committed. When the code enforcement board determines that no violation was committed, an order dismissing the citation shall be entered. When the code enforcement board determines that a violation has been committed, it shall issue an order upholding the citation and may order the offender to pay a civil fine or may order the offender to remedy a continuing violation within a specified period of time to avoid the imposition of the fine or both. The board shall order the offender, upon the finding of the violation, to pay in addition to any fine, the cost of hearing, including attorney fees, witness fees, and administrative costs. Number 13, every final order of the code enforcement board shall be reduced in writing, which shall include the date the order was issued. The copy of the order shall be furnished to the person named in the citation. If the person named in the citation is not present at the time the final order is issued, the order shall be delivered to that person by certified mail, return receipt requested, or by personal delivery, or by leaving a copy of the order at that person's usual place of residence with an individual over 18 years of age who is informed of the contents of the order. Number 14, an appeal from any final order issued by the board may be made to the Ohio County District Court within 30 days of the date of the order is issued. The appeal shall be initiated by the filing of a complaint and a copy of the code enforcement board's order in the same manner as any civil action under the rules of civil procedure. The appeal shall be limited to review of the record created before the code enforcement board. If no appeal from a final order of the code enforcement board is filed within the time period set forth in this section, or the violation is not remedied and fines paid, the code enforcement board's order shall be deemed final for all purposes. The city shall possess a lien on real property owned by the persons found by a final non-appellable order of the code enforcement board or by final judgment of the court to have committed a violation. And it goes through the same thing as earlier, about the 12% and lien on the property. Seventeen, in addition to the remedy prescribed in subsection 13 above, a person found to have committed a violation shall be personally responsible for the amount of all fines assessed for the violation and for all charges, fees incurred by the city in connection with enforcement That's basically what we do right now. Am I correct? I mean, that's nothing new. But it was not worded, and it was a whole lot different the way they do it in here, and we wanted to keep the same policy and procedure we've always done. So the next change is 106.3. You see where it's being replaced as follows. The penalties for violation. Number one, any person, firm, corporation, or titled owner who violates a provision of this code shall be subject to a civil fine of not less than $100 per violation, but not more than $500 per violation, or the cost to the city of Beverden to abate the violation or both. Each date that a violation of this ordinance continues after due notice has been served in accordance with the terms of this code shall be deemed a separate offense to a maximum of $15,000 per citation. As an additional alternative remedy to the above penalty, any violator who violates any provision of the City Property Code and has been previously issued two or more citations of violations of the city of Beverden of ordinances related to the same property within a 12-month period may be assessed additional civil penalties of $500 per day for violation to a maximum of $30,000 per citation. The city shall possess a lien on all property for all fines, penalties, charges, attorney's fees, and other reasonable costs associated with enforcing this code, and is placing a lien on the parcel of real property pursuant to the code. The next one's 106.4, which the violation penalties is not adopted. And that, it just spells out a different process than what we normally do. Section 107, sections one, two, three, and five, we are not adopting. And again, a lot of it is procedure, the way they do it, set up in an ordinance versus the way we do it. A lot of talks about signage it's put up and tampering with and what have you.
And that's for residents?
I'm sorry?
That's for residents?
Residential and business. Most of this is what we-
It's pretty convenient if you go $30,000 for a residence, don't even pay $30,000 a year.
Well, all they have to do is fix the problem, and there's no, everything goes away.
Yeah, every problem is real easy to fix.
Well, if you're going to have a piece of property, you've got to take care of it.
Low woman job is a good job too.
Well, take that up with the county. Let's see, where were we at?
108.3.
108.3.
A county doesn't pay $1,000 a month. You want to get over $30,000 in a year period?
108.3, replace the section as follows. It's the notice. Whenever the code official has condemned a structure or equipment under the provisions of this section, notice shall be posted in a conspicuous place on or about the structure affected by such notice and served on the owner of the person or persons responsible for the structure. If the notice pertains to equipment, it shall be placed on the condemned equipment. The notice shall be in the form prescribed in section 106 and served on the owner or responsible person with section 106. However, if the whereabouts of a person is unknown and it cannot be ascertained by a code official in the exercise of reasonable diligence, or the whereabouts of the owner is known and he or she refuses to accept personal service with a certified letter of mail to him or her, the code official shall make an affidavit to that effect, and thereafter, further notice may be served on such persons by sending a copy of the same by regular U.S. mail to the person's last known mailing address, as recorded in the PVA or by newspaper publication. With respect to structures that violate the subsection upon failure of the owner or person responsible to comply with the notice provisions within the time given, code officials shall post on the premises a placard bearing the following language: "This building is unfit for human habitation, occupancy, or use. The use or occupation of this building for human habitation, occupancy, or use is prohibited and unlawful. With respect to defective equipment upon failure of the owner or person responsible to comply with the notice provisions within the time given, code officials shall post on the equipment a placard that the equipment is defective and should not be used and/or may have the equipment rendered inoperable until such time as it complies with code." 108.4.1 is still all part of the placarding. The code officials shall remove the above referenced placard whenever the defect or defects upon which the placarding national rebates have been eliminated. Any person who defaces or removes the condemnation placard without the approval of the code officials shall be in violation of the Kentucky Penal Code and subject to immediate arrest and applicable penalties. 108.5, change the original to, "Any person who shall occupy placarded premises or shall operate placarded equipment and any owner or any person responsible for the premises who shall let anyone occupy placarded premises or operate placarded equipment shall be in violation of Kentucky Penal Code and subject to immediate arrest penalties." Costs incurred in the performance of emergency work shall be paid by the city. The city may recover these costs by filing a lien on the property on which the emergency work was performed, and it may recover those costs by foreclosing on this lien or by taking other appropriate legal action.
Is that between fire dues and even there would be a fire?
I'm sorry?
Would that be changed to fires and even if a fire, would that be reversed, or a fire dues not covered that?
Fire-
Is it emergency services, that's what I'm missing?
Well, fire dues is only if you live outside the city limits. If you live within the city limits, you don't pay fire dues. So, and this is all just strictly inside the city limits.
Do we have a copy of this for anyone to have?
Well, we don't have it tonight, but there's a, you can do an open records request, and they can get you one printed up. Notice and orders. All notice and orders shall be issued and served in the same manner as is set forth in section 108. And 110.4, saw on salvage materials. When any structure has been ordered demolished and removed, the city commissioner or other designated officer under contract or arrangement shall have the right, if it's not required, to sell the salvage and valuable materials at the highest price obtainable. The net proceeds of such sale, after deducting the expenses of such demolition and removal, and after the payment of any leans, fines, or taxes owed to the property shall be promptly remitted with a report of such sale or transaction, including the items of expense and the amounts deducted for the person who is entitled thereto, subject to any order of a court. If such a surplus does not remain to be turned over, the report shall so state. And then 111, this is a different appeals process that has been taken out altogether and/or not adopted. Now, all this stuff, David, have we ever done a condemnation through code enforcement?
Not through code enforcement, there was the one on rendering that the city did.
Well, that's, yeah, separate, and what happened there. So, all this stuff, the stuff that, well, I say through code enforcement, we've never had, we've never incurred or had happen here. That's why we're trying to make some of these a little more palatable, but it's still part of the thing to try to keep it from happening here. Okay. They just adopts the penalties of the 500 and 1,000 for, on the condemnation side, for failing to agree to honor a stop work order. This gets into the dwelling parts. The definitions, like section 302 is exterior properties. It talks about sanitation, drainage, sidewalks and driveways, weeds, road and harbages, exhaust vents, accessory structures, motor vehicles, and defacement of property. And the first one is section 302.4. The weeds, we have to put in something in there, and 10 inches is what we've had all along on ours for quite some time. Section 302.8 is basically replacing what's in theirs with this one. Says, "It shall be unlawful for the owner, occupant, or person having control or management of any premises, residential or non-residential, to permit an inoperative or unlicensed vehicle to be parked, kept, or stored on the premises visible from public right-of-way. No vehicle shall at any time be in a state of major disassembly, disrepair, or in the process of being stripped or dismantled," again, viewable from a public right-of-way. "Painting of vehicles is prohibited unless conducted inside an approved spray booth." Exception, the exception is a vehicle of any type is permitted to undergo major overhaul, including bodywork, provided that such work is performed inside a structure or similar enclosed area designed and approved for such purposes. Minor repair work may be completed on a vehicle within the view of public right-of-way, provided the repair work is completed the same day and vehicle is not left overnight in inoperable Section 302.10 is added, entitled equipment, vehicles, and scrap. "It shall be unlawful for the owner, occupant, or person having control or management of any premises, residential or non-residential, to permit a public nuisance, health hazard, or source of filth through the accumulation of junk, wrecked, scrapped, or inoperable automobiles, vehicles, machinery, junked, or inoperable lawn equipment, or other similar scrap or salvage materials." Exception, and exception applies to a commercial enterprise who has received approvals from the Hartford-Beverden Joint Planning and Zoning Commission to operate such a business. However, all planning and zoning regulations must be adhered to, and any such junked, wrecked, scrapped, or inoperable automobiles, vehicles, machinery, junked, or inoperable lawn equipment, or other similar scrap or salvage materials must be kept within a secure fenced area and shall not be visible from public right-of-way. 303 discusses swimming pools. 303.1 is remaining. Swimming pools shall be maintained in a clean and sanitary condition and in good repair. Section 303.2 on the enclosures is not being adopted under this because it'd be redundant because that is under the current planning and zoning regulations on fences around pools. Yeah, it's insect screens. This talks about the ventilation of homes and stuff, on having to have a screen and all that kind of stuff, and we did not adopt that. And then 308.2. Some of the rest of this, talks about this whole section on, 304 is exterior, talking about unsafe conditions. It talks about foundations and walls and roofing and veneer and overhangs and exterior stairs, decks, porches, chimneys, and that have you, protective treatment. Structural members, foundation walls, exterior walls, roofs, and drainage, decorative features, overhangs, stairways, chimneys. 306 is component serviceability. A lot of that is concrete. And 308.2.2, refrigerators. This is, section is being replaced as follows. Refrigerators and similar equipment not in operation shall not be discarded, abandoned, or stored on the premises without first removing the doors. Additionally, no refrigerators or appliances intended for indoor use shall be outdoors within public view of the right-of-way. 308.4, insert, this is a new section. No owner of any dwelling shall allow the placing of any furniture not originally sold new for outdoor use on the exterior of a dwelling. 309 talks about pest elimination, rodents and rats and what have you. Chapter four is all about lights, ventilation, occupancy limitations, and most of that's interior stuff that we wouldn't be affected by anyway because we do not enter. Chapter five is plumbing, fixtures and fixture requirements. And number 502.6, this section, its heading shall be added as the followed. All residential dwelling units and all non-residential units equipped with such facilities are required to have running water provided by a public water system. And chapter six deals with the mechanical and electrical requirements. 6.2.1 is changed. Heating facilities shall be provided and structures as required by this section. Every residential and commercial occupancy shall have a permanent heat source. Permanent heat source is one which the power source is either hardwired or piped into the appropriate utility. And that gets away from wood heaters put in mobile homes, that gets away from open flames. But again, a lot of that is interior, so that's only affected if there is a complaint. 602.3, talks about the dates and stuff, and that only applies from September 30th through And then the others, yeah, through May 31st, so that's. And then the last section, electrical tank was the last. That's the last-
So that, sir, you can't have a dammed heater or gas stove?
Yeah, you can do that because they're produced and manufactured for that purpose.
They produce flame.
I'm sorry?
They produce flame.
It's still manufactured for that purpose. We've had some issues with wood stoves and fireplaces being built inside of some mobile homes.
So far, everything you said sounds about like what we've already got on the books.
90% of it is.
But what have we changed?
Because the books, on the books, it's nuisance. And what some people claim to be a nuisance, others don't see as a nuisance. So we're going by- So, we're going by, this property maintenance was, has been put together, it's been accepted internationally with this property maintenance code, and we were just approving it, to solidify, pretty much what we've got, and get some teeth to it. Because right now, when I say if David goes out and does something, it's like, well, you know, just because I got all these junk cars out here, I don't think it's a nuisance, but your neighbor might feel differently.
Are you inspecting the inside now as well as outside?
No, we're not doing anything inside right now.
Then you said that you would inspect inside if there was a complaint?
Well, if, if a homeowner calls and complains about an inside violation, we can.
What if it's a tenant?
Tenant, yeah, we can.
Because they're legally...
What about if they're not compliant, they're not that safe for a reason?
I'm sorry?
What if they're not current with their rent?
That's something that code enforcement will have to work out with the property owner.
Yeah, because if you had to vic somebody and they go, well, first thing they're gonna do, they're probably gonna turn the water faucets on, let them run, and then we get into the other deal. And then they're gonna call and complain about all kinds of stuff, which...
Well...
If somebody's three months behind on their rent, you're probably gonna ask them to move, and you're not gonna do a whole lot of repairs in the meantime.
And that's why...
The first thing they're gonna do is run down here.
Well, but they're gonna have to have some legitimate reason, they can't just come up here and say, they're throwing me out, I want something done about it.
Is there some kind of, are we, have we added any kind of inspection fee or anything?
No.
Are you gonna charge them to come and do something? Because they're not paying, they're not paying us as the landlord, and they're not paying their utilities. So, once their things get cut off, and they're not paying rent, and we're giving them out, then they're gonna come and complain to you that we've done something wrong when we haven't done anything wrong, other than them not paying rent and not taking care of the place.
Well, but that can be handled with one phone call from code enforcement to the owner of the property. It's like, here's what we've got, and if you tell him that rent had been paid two or three months, that's the first thing we're gonna do is like, until you're...
So he's gonna, he's gonna come to us prior to the day?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Say, hey, what's going on with this tenant or this property or whatever?
Yes, they will, the property owner will be contacted.
So basically, what you're doing is just putting teeth in the code enforcement?
That's what we're doing. Because we've had a lot of issues right now where, like, say, it comes in, and it's like, well, they don't consider that a nuisance.
And, and say you do have somebody turns water on on your kids, they have three months, you said three months, I'm gonna use that, say they're three months behind on their water bill, and you go, and the code enforcement goes back and he says, two months, three months ago, it was this, two months ago was this, and now it's way up here, well, you know they have gone in there and done that, that's not gonna be...
They won't even, they won't even have water by that point.
Yeah, they will, they'll be in big trouble, and they'll give you a right to get rid of them because he can actually fight.
State of Kentucky doesn't require, if you wanna vic somebody, state of Kentucky doesn't require a reason, all you gotta do is give them 30 days' notice, period. But you gotta, well, you don't even have to do that, I just found out that your lease is written right, but anyhow. Okay, so you're just basically changing, putting teeth in the code.
We're putting teeth into it and putting it up in something that's recognized internationally as far as the type of ordinance it is.
Well, if, I don't know if y'all do it, but I know that Hartford does it, like, if we rent something, you'll have to have our lease agreement before you turn the water on for that individual.
Yes.
It says, do you know that, will you contact the landowner that they're not paying their water bill? Generally, we don't know until months down the road.
And then they're financially responsible for it, correct?
That's where what we do, when they come in there, we, we have very little grace period because it's turned off pretty quick.
I know that, but we never know that.
You'll, you'll get word when it's turned off.
Yeah.
You'll get word when it's turned off.
Y'all, y'all will contact?
The property owner will be contacted when it's turned off.
Hartford doesn't do that.
Hartford is different in Beverlyham.
Yeah, Hartford is different. Contact the landowner.
Now, that's one of the things we discussed in this last thing with the water, that if that's the case, the owner will be contacted.
And we cut down the time that you have to do it, so it's not as long and drawn out, it's a shorter period. So they don't have as many days to run your water bill up, if that was the case, before they get it cut off.
What did y'all find out on the cutoff date?
It's still in the air because there's some legal stuff that we're running to.
Yeah, but it's, it's gonna be closer to...
Well, when you, when y'all said the, whatever it was, I didn't figure that, that was too quick, I didn't figure that was too long, but somewhere in the middle of my mind.
Yeah, somewhere in the middle.
I got a question for you, Paul.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned falling off, it'll lean against a piece of property, you can force foreclosure on it.
Mm-hmm.
How are you gonna do that? I'm just curious on how you take a lien and then force a person to, or how you foreclose on that person.
Just file suit to foreclose on the lien, and it sells at the courthouse door.
Didn't you say also that you're all's lien for code enforcement would take precedent over any existing mortgage on it?
No, any subsequent lien, except for taxes.
Yeah, taxes, like city and county taxes, and the school tax and all that.
And you said something about the emergency services things, I just kind of missed part of that, I think, you said that you all would come back to recoup that from the property owner?
A lot of what that is, that's not gonna be what you're thinking, like, fire related or anything like that. What that is, is if you have to last take a building, that's gonna come down, that's gonna cause a public safety issue, and you will not do nothing about it, the city has to come in and remove it. That's what would be considered emergency service.
Oh, you're thinking emergency fire.
We had a tree fall on the house up here, we just got through doing this, so...
Yeah, it's in the middle of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had a tree fall right on top of a mobile home, we just basically split it in half, and everybody just left.
And it's been three, three years, is it three years?
I know where the house you're talking about, is it?
Yeah.
So I think you worked that out, I mean...
Well, the, the problem we had with it, the, the owner died, and the people that inherited were both minors and in state custody, and trying to find them and locate them, so, but we're doing a condemnation on it. But it didn't come under code enforcement, it comes under another one in the city.
Whatever you're condemning these properties, you all are just putting them at the courthouse steps to sell? What's the timeline on that? As far as like, if you condemn something, how long does that take before you decide to sell, or have you done it before?
Yeah, we've done some. A lot of times it takes up almost 90 days or longer, because there's the process, like, on the, just the code enforcement issue, when it's issued, they've got, a notice of violation goes out if there's not been an issue before, you've got seven days to remedy and con, or contact, and that's one thing that we've got to be clear on. If you get a notice of violation on something going on, all it takes, because we don't want the property, we don't really want the fines, we just want stuff cleaned up. If you get a notice of violation from code enforcement, you've got seven days to do something in. A lot of times, if you'll call David and said, hey, here's what we're looking at, we're planning on this, this, and this, but it's gonna take us a little longer than seven days, I know you've given them, what, 30 and 60 days on stuff to get, you know, get stuff fixed.
As long as there's being progress.
As long as progress, like I say, is being made. But then after that, once you get the notice of violation, there's another 10 days to go in or to have a hearing or anything before you can go any further than that.
What are the fines, funds go to, just general funds?
They just go to general fund. But now, I was trying to think, I don't think we've even, last year, maybe $200 or $300? Again, it's not about the money.
Usually, everything gets worked out.
Everything usually gets worked out before there's even a citation issued. But we're having, like I say, we're having a lot of issues with stuff that's gray area, I guess, but some people think it's a nuisance, some don't. So what we're doing is spelling it out, so everybody knows what's... You know, that's why, like, we changed this in here, say you've got a car that's a couple years old and belonged to your mom, and she's in the hospital or nursing something, and it's not licensed, all we ask is pull it around back, or in a garage or something. We don't want one sitting out on blocks. You know, again, just take it around back. That's the kind of stuff we're looking at right now. And then a lot of the, a lot of houses, we've got some houses, I'll tell you, that's got gutters hanging off of them and windows broken. In fact, I would even go so far as to say the city has some property that doesn't meet some of these codes right now that we've already been addressing with our city employees.
And it talked about putting up the fence around, like, when you have a junkyard or something, and you have cars out there that are being worked on, that's, that's not our law, that's state law. They're all supposed to have that. So it's not something we put into effect, it's something the state has put into effect.
I have a question about gutters. So if a gutter's hanging down, you just take it off, right?
There's no gutter on there, right?
Yeah.
We're not gonna...
Because that's a major problem with rentals, because a renter is not gonna clean the weeds out of the gutter, and then it's gonna fill up, and probably it's gonna, you know... But you can just take it all the way down, not have a gutter.
We just want the neighborhoods to be something if you wouldn't care to live next door to it. And there's some places in town that I wouldn't want to live next door to it.
I mean, I've got no problem with code enforcement, because if somebody's got a junk car in the yard, instead of me having to go and jump home and be the bad guy, just say, get rid of that code enforcement, come out here and get, get me.
Yeah, get you.
And then I pass it on.
Yeah.
And that works better than me just rocking that a lot. As long as we're not getting into something where somebody's gotta come in, and you pay them a hundred dollar inspection fee, and they tell you when to put your ground camera tops on, when you gotta paint the inside, when you gotta change your carpet, and all that kind of job.
That's not being done right now.
Not right now.
But I will tell you, there are a number of cities that do have, and, and it's a little, it's not quite what you're talking about, they have the rental inspection programs where some of them have rentals inspections once a year. Most of them I've talked to try to do it when, between occupants.
Most of them are, are major cities, though, right?
No, the, the toughest one in the state of Kentucky is Fulton, Kentucky. Fulton, Kentucky. About 1,300.
1,300. What's the annual salary?
In Fulton, Kentucky, it'd be lower than here.
I don't know, there's nothing, it's about as far west as you can go.
Tennessee line down there is nothing.
Tennessee, Tennessee, it's, it's a very rural, rural place.
But what they do, and what they look at when they go in, is, do the, the light fixtures are up there, do they work? Do the laplets work? On an oven, does it still work, do the burners work? Does it have the GFI in the bathroom, is, you know, are the, the windows in place, will the windows open? Because that's state.
Well, I mean, you shouldn't have to do that, the renter's gonna want that done to start with, so...
Well, that's, we're, we're just taking baby steps, and that's what we're doing this first thing, to try to get this stuff cleaned up. This takes care of everything, we won't have any problems from us.
What you've said so far, I've got no problem with it, as long as it don't become a slippery slope and get into the, to the other.
Well, I mean, you know, something that happened to you last year, and I called you about it, and I thought it was ridiculous.
Who, me?
Yeah, you remember that thing? Yeah, and I told you, I thought it was ridiculous, and I wasn't gonna, I wasn't gonna, there was no way I was gonna have you fined for that, that wasn't even your responsibility. But we had got cleaned up, no big deal, nothing was done. And I, you know, there are leadways and things you can do to make things, it shouldn't be a fight between the homeowners and the renters and everybody else and the city, it should everybody be getting it taken care of.
Well, that guy was a nut, he called lease over on that piece of property and set it on fire, and I had a couple of police up there.
In your yard?
Huh?
In your yard?
Yeah!
I know. If anybody should've got fined or arrested, it should've been him.
Travis, staying through your question, I looked it up real quick, this is data, the last thing that's been published in 2020, in Fulton, the median household income is 29.4.
Well, that is maybe higher than here.
No, median's 40 something.
43?
I didn't realize it's 43.
Yeah, it's, it's a little higher than that here.
Huh?
23.
That's in Fulton.
Yeah, this is in...
Year's 23, 29, I told him what he said.
Travis asked what the median income was in...
So it is higher here, it is higher there than it is here.
I think it's 43 something, that's bigger than... No, not median.
Years ago, it was 25, but that's when our grandparent went to...
We just, I just hadn't pulled it, grand.
This is a question about vehicles. Is it basically what it comes down to, who your neighbors are?
Who else on the code enforcement board? You said there was a board, is it just you all?
No, there is a board.
There is a board.
Well, the reason I'm asking is, several years ago, we was forced to get rid of a vehicle, and I, I'm not saying that it wasn't an old vehicle and stuff, but we was forced to get rid of it, it belonged to my wife's father, who had just passed away. And they, they come down there two, three times, you know, and upset her and stuff, so I ended up coming down here. But anyway, that, this is back when Freeman was doing it. And Freeman Staples.
Oh.
But in a 12-block area here in town, I rode around, and there was a dozen vehicles that looked just as bad as that one, and been sitting longer. None of them, none of them was moved. So that's recognized, yes, is it, depends on who your neighbors are? You said it by complaints.
Most of them are taken by complaints, but it can be taken, and, and that's one thing that will happen that we've talked about, we're gonna be doing a little more patrolling on our own.
Well, I mean, you know...
Without complaints, but...
If, if it was done fair, I, I wouldn't have probably had a bad, but I would, we was the only one that was targeted. We was the only one that had to move a vehicle, out of all of them.
That's not right.
No, no. But if, if some of the other ones had to move theirs, I would understand me having to move mine, you know? But I, I didn't think that was right, the way it went.
Right. That came down probably, and I don't know, but that probably came down under, I don't know why anybody would have complained if there was a bunch of others in the same neighborhood.
Well, Mr. Staples told me, which, he said, if you want some of them moved, complain about them. I said, well, then that wouldn't make me any better than the one that complained about mine.
Well, what should've happened in a situation like that where a complaint was made, and they found that to happen, there's, that's when the officer should start looking around the same area.
Yeah, because I, I told him it was within 12 blocks, but they were still sitting there, some of them still are. So, and this was years ago.
Yeah, because he's been gone.
Yeah, it's been a while, but that, that was a question about that. I think I had some...
I don't know the name.
I don't recognize it at all.
Maples. Oh, oh, oh.
I, I guess I had some neighbors that were, didn't like the vehicle more than some. Sorry.
So Paul, this brought up at the meeting last month or whatever, and I heard a little bit, touched on it there, have you found out anymore of the legal aspects of, like, kicking somebody out if they don't have their utilities?
We can do it on, we can do it on water.
Yeah, if it's water, we can.
Legal.
Within 15 days?
We can, because it's a health and, a health hazard.
Still within, within 15 days?
Well... I'm talking about, that's when the water's turned off. He's talking about if there's, and I know of a couple places in town right now where there's people living, but they don't have the water service.
Isn't that automatic eviction?
Well, it will be with this, but it's not...
What's the timeline? Does it follow all that, 90 days for no water? Does that mean if you don't have utilities in a building, it's kind of automatically condemned, isn't it?
No, not water.
Are there penalties to any landowner if they have tenants and something, then they leave, it's vacant, do they still have to keep water on?
No, not, there's not, no residents there.
The reason I asked that, I'll just tell you all, I mean, I think it's a great idea because I bought a house over Hartford just to, you know, to sell, fix up and sell. After we got it done, the people next door, I realized didn't have any water, and they were stealing water out of my tap outside. So, I turned the tap off, but it's the outside hydrant. Well, I really screwed up then, because then they started getting in the house, and once they got in the house, then they started taking showers and doing laundry and everything. So I think it's a great idea.
You need some cameras in the back. You all good?
I'm fine.
Everything right now?
Like I said, it's self-explanatory, pretty much.
Okay, well, I just wanted to go through everything line by line and make sure everybody understood it on the same page, and, like I say, we're not acting, we're not doing anything tonight with this, other than we were gonna go through a work session where everybody could talk it through. And, you know, I'm one of these, I don't know we would've had to, but I wanted to be up on the front, up and up, we're not trying to slide anything through or hide anything. This is a whole, most of this is a whole lot of what we already have on the books anyway, this is just going a different route with this property maintenance code that has been accepted, to where we have a little more teeth into it and get it done.
And like you said, it's taking a lot of gray area out.
A lot of gray areas out.
All ordinances are based off the International Building Code.
Right.
But they're considered a nuisance mortgage versus a city mortgage, and that's where it gets a little bit more teeth in it.
Well, it is an issue for the landlord, I mean, the homeowner, to do whatever needs to be done, because it's right there in writing there.
How long is it gonna be before you get this in the works, where you kick somebody out that's ever... I got one, too. If you cut the lec, if the lec's cut off and they can't charge your phone, they're gone, but they'll pack water for... gone, but they'll pack water forever.
That's what we're finding.
Yeah, it don't taste, now with the new toll, it only tastes a couple of gallons.
What worries me is the ones who just flush once a day or every couple of days.
Yeah.
That's another sad situation.
Okay, well, I don't intend to mention it adjourned.
Is this going to full neck, or is that?